Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The Board met in executive session December 5th and December 12th to discuss matters of litigation, personnel, real estate, and contract negotiations.
Recommend approval of the following meeting minutes as listed.
Attendance's roll call?
Roll call, Mrs. Anderson?
Here. Here.
Here.
Here.
Here.
Here.
Here.
Preston.
Here.
Recommend approval of the following meeting minutes as listed, November 21, 2017.
I'll make that recommendation.
The motion is second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All that oppose? Motion passes. There's gonna be some student features coming up now. First off, boys varsity football.
It's always difficult for me with the little stands. Yeah. Thank you for having us here tonight, recognizing our student athletes for their accomplishments throughout the season. Like to congratulate the new board members. Some familiar faces I see in the crowd here now and keep up the good work. First, I want to introduce Aaron Scheffler. He was a two-way starter for us. He got all conference, second team, offensive center. Sorry. Yep, come on up. Colt Rob here? No. Another player we had made all-conference, second team, running back, Colt Rob. Next, second-team all-conference defensive end. Thought he did a real good job this season. He grew a lot as a player, as a man, Carson Ewing. Next, second-team all-conference linebacker, captain of a football team. Very soft-spoken. Most I ever heard him talk was on Sunday at our banquet. In four years, he hasn't talked at all. But Dakota had a heck of a season for us and congratulations. Next, really consistent kicker. You know, we've had a tendency to have some really good kickers here at Plum. Jackson's the next in line. Jackson Gildea got second-team punter and kicker, all-conference. Next, we got some of our honorable mention athletes. Seth Norcutt is a junior tight end. Next, a junior as well, Cooper Obo, offensive tackle, defensive tackle. Next athlete we have on here is, we feel really bad for him. He just got diagnosed with the disease of the heart and will no longer be able to play. But, you know, he started for two years for us as a freshman and a sophomore, Anthony Little. Next, senior multi-purpose athlete. Played every position on offense, pretty much, but the offensive line. We joked around, almost put him there, but played every position on the offense and he played cornerback and got multi-purpose all-conference. Dominic Carlosano. There he is, right there, okay. Now we got a freshman that's gonna be a shining star for us here in the future. His name's Reed Martin. Got all-conference, honorable mention, wide receiver. Next, we got Mike Gianuzzi. He was an offensive guard, defensive tackle, very good player for us. Got hurt early in the season and unfortunately got hurt for the rest of the year, but he was all-conference honorable mention. One of our athletes is not here right now, Corey Thomas. He was all- honorable mention linebacker. Last but not least, Hunter Fields, honorable mention, defensive back. He also played wide receiver for us. Hunter Fields. Thank you again for having us. I know you've got something to say. Go for it. You want this?
I just wanted to ask if the seniors could come up to the mic one at a time and just give us a little bit of an idea what you plan on doing with your future. If you haven't decided where you want to go from here, just let us know what you're thinking about. If you have a school that you plan on attending, let us know. And if you plan on continuing in athletics as well, just give us little updates so we can congratulate you for your four years of hard work.
Hey, I'm Mike Gianuzzi and I plan on attending CCAC in pursuit of a nursing degree.
Hi, I'm Carson Ewing and I plan on attending Mount Union and pursuing a nursing degree.
Hi, my name is Dakota Sunday and I plan on joining the military and going to school for law enforcement.
Hi, I'm Dom Carlosano and I'm going to pursue my career in the United States Army as an 11X infantryman.
Hi, I'm Jackson Gildea. I'm undecided with my college, but I'm gonna study forensics.
Hi, I'm Hunter Fields and I'm still undecided on my college, but I plan on studying sports science.
Hi, I'm Aaron Scheffler. I'm undecided, but I plan on studying business.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen. Good luck to the seniors in your future endeavors and good luck in your next season, underclassmen. Thanks for coming up.
Congratulations, guys. Good job. All right, next thing on the agenda is gonna be a JROTC briefing.
Good evening, school board and guests. My name is Cadet Lieutenant Colonel Ruby.
I'm Kevi Droschowski.
And we would like to thank the school board for having us here to present our 2017-2018 unit briefing. So today we'd like to talk to you about what our mission is for JROTC. Who we really are. Thank you. And any questions you may have about the program. What is our ROTC? What is our mission? Our main mission is to build better citizens of America, just make better citizens around our community and for our nation. There are currently almost 900 ROTC units, Air Force Junior ROTC units around the nation, and there are almost 250 on the waiting list. We are a very sought-after program. People want to have us in their school districts and we're lucky enough to have it here at Plum. One of our main goals is to make better citizens, as I mentioned before, and we change lives, we change communities, and we change the nation. One of our core values is community service. As you can see, we had almost 3,000 hours of community service, which ended up in around 40 hours per cadet. And we just want to build better citizens. We want to make them better and want them to care about their community as much as we do. So our program consists of a group of teenagers who run everything. We are a cadet-run program. And recently, we've had a lot of successes. One of the particular successes I like to bring up is our 2017-2018 unit inspection, in which a certified inspector comes out to our school from AFJ ROTC headquarters in Alabama and determines whether or not our unit is able to continue running. And currently, we've been praised for our great achievements, not only within our program, but also the school, for providing us with whatever we need to have a good program and participate in the activities that we want to. We currently have 91 cadets with two instructors and we're constantly growing. And one of the major parts of that is that we are a family. And people aren't just joining a program whenever they're joining JROTC. They're also joining a family that's outside of their own. Something bigger than what they've come from. And we like to brag that we do like to instill military values without having the so-called military commitment. But it's things like integrity and discipline and attention to detail that we give our cadets whenever they come here. Something we would also like to mention is, at the moment, we have 91 cadets. And right now, to continue as a unit, we will need over 100 cadets or 10% of the school, whichever is smaller. In our case, it's 100 cadets. Next year, we have the chance to be cut if we do not bring our numbers up. While we pride ourselves in having a lot of involvement in the Corps, we have cadets involved in multiple different activities, which we will get to later. We want them to be involved in the school. We have kids in AP classes, we have them in honors classes, we have people who are in robotics and chess. And we have our cadets all over the school participating in different activities and bettering themselves, not just through the program. So one of the things that we like to instill in our cadets is a sense of wellness, that they need to take care of both their minds and their body. The teachings that we have around wellness follow the cadets throughout their entire lives. And how we do this is, we have physical training days on Mondays. Half of that is calisthenics with the group and the other half of that is group sports. Currently, we have eight awardees of the fitness award. In the bottom right-hand corner, you see one of our cadets, Lauren Pernice, who just received the Silver Star for fitness. She's among the top 25% of all cadets nationwide of JROTC units because she did so well. Also, in the spring, we have field training exercises, and that's just a combination of sports and leadership activities. These events are scored by our instructors and go into what we call Honor Flight, which is the flight that demonstrated the most excellence and went above and beyond of all of our classes. As I mentioned before, community service is one of our core values. We really want the cadets to see that there's a bigger picture than their own lives, what they're doing. We care about our community and we hope our cadets will feel the same way eventually as well. We have a list up here of just some of the events that we are involved in. The most recent one being stuff of us and other activities around the school participated in. I know myself, within the Corps, I have over 450 hours of community service. I would not have had that opportunity not being within the Corps. So every year, we are required by the Air Force to go on a curriculum and action trip. Up here, you see some of the past curriculum and action trips we've had. They are a really great opportunity for cadets to get outside the classroom, become more well-rounded, and they reflect what we're teaching with inside the class. We have, as I mentioned before, different opportunities for leadership teams or leadership opportunities within the Corps. Up here are some of our teams. We have anything from drill teams to academic bowl to drones. Most recently, we have received some achievements within these programs. We made it to the second round of our J-Lab Academic Bowl, which is an academic competition. That's the first time our Corps has ever received that honor. We have been winning our Cellar Explorers for two years now. We keep moving up in the rounds. That's a space-like program where we use the same program that NASA uses to simulate or simulate different occurrences. And another thing that I think is very important for the Corps is our Kitty Hawk Air Society. It's an opportunity for underclassmen, not just upperclassmen, to take part in a national honor society. It's through Air Force Junior ROTC, but we have the same requirements as a normal national honor society does. So one of the best things about JROTC, it is that it gives cadets so many opportunities outside the classroom to further their educations. One of the greatest opportunities that it gives is academy appointments. We've had three in the past five years, which is a very large number. And they get their education paid for. They receive a bachelor's degree and are commissioned as a second lieutenant as they go through one of the rigorous education programs in the country. Another is ROTC scholarships. I myself am an ROTC scholarship applicant, so this has helped me a lot. And enlisted cadets who decide to go into the military get a step up in their careers whenever they join, as they get a rank increase that is higher than regular enlistees. The Air Force has also been looking for pilots recently and they have decided to open up a scholarship program for cadets in all grades through high school to earn their pilot's license. And ROTC isn't just scholarship opportunities. It also gives cadets an opportunity to have their resume with achievements that they've earned with their time in the program. For myself, as Cadet Ruby mentioned, she is looking at an ROTC scholarship. I'm just planning to go to regular college. This has really built up my resume for my community service hours and my leadership opportunities. I've gotten involved in multiple programs throughout the Corps and it just really boosted what colleges were looking for and it gave me that leg up. And while these opportunities are out there for our cadets, they don't have to take them. Only about 25% of our cadets go into the military. That's nationwide. And the other 75% go on to have normal, or what we so call "normal," high school pathways such as college or trade school. Another thing that we pride ourselves in is our communication skills. As you can see, we have a Twitter, a Facebook, and an Instagram, which is a great way for the cadets to see what other cadets are doing, but it also gives the parents an opportunity to have a look inside the Corps. Another thing that we have is our webpage. It has every link that a cadet could possibly need on there. Anything from uniform guidelines to our chain of command, which goes through all of our leadership opportunities. And we have a remind system, which will have, not random, but good reminders for the cadets that they need. Now, our communication systems aren't just for cadets, it's also for our parents. So we're not just keeping our cadets involved in the Corps, but we're keeping their families. So our family thus becomes larger and everyone's informed. Now, we'd like to know if you have any questions for us.
When you guys start?
We both started as freshmen, sir.
Freshmen? And how many people were involved at the time when you guys started?
I think our freshman class, whenever we joined, had about, I'd say, 125, 150. Yeah, around that.
Number dropped a little bit?
A little bit, but we're building it back up slowly.
As far as your, have you considered the 9/11ths or the 1/71st as potential spots for your field trips?
We have not, sir, but that's a very great suggestion. Yeah, we have not.
I'm just saying, you know, because people don't really think of Pittsburgh as a hotspot for military, but, you know, in Moon Township, we have three military bases here. There's an Army Reserve, the 9/11th is the Air Force Reserve, and then the 1/71st is the Pennsylvania Air National Guard. And with the new C-17s coming to the 9/11th, all of those facilities are being upgraded and, you know, it's... You ever need to set up a tour, you know, please contact me and I can put you in contact with the people at the 1/71st to get you guys out there.
I think he's saying you can get on a C-17 and go somewhere nice.
C-17, 135, yeah, we'll get you out.
Oh, absolutely, ma'am. We are very, very grateful of the Junior High and their staff for letting us come down and have a voice within their students. Because we don't have a junior junior ROTC per se or an organization down there for us to be represented, really. Other programs such as art or music, they have preprograms before you come to high school and we aren't really graced with that, unfortunately. But the principal at the high school has been very gracious in allowing us to come down and represent ourselves through community service events such as our ceremonies for Veterans Day and helping out in general with volunteering.
You can talk about an education, I think so.
So last year, we had 71 cadets. This year, we have 81. I think six or seven freshmen. Okay, they're ready to join next year. So if you look at the freshman class, it's still something about 35. I think if freshmen, I think we'll be well over 100. To grow, to continue to grow, because we have outstanding cadets on campus who are leading the way. I think they mentioned really nicely that... Also sponsored event, 3er B, 3er B, middle school. Kind of try on ROTC. All these feet going.
Positive, thank you.
Thank you for having us.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, next, is there any citizens' comments on agenda items? You're talking about the settlement, that's personnel.
Thank you.
Are there any citizens' comments on non-agenda items?
Hi, I'm Kevin Dowdell, 406 Shellmore Drive. First of all, I'd like to congratulate the newly-elected school board members to the Board and welcome to Plum. In case you haven't heard, after each election cycle, the Pennsylvania School Board Association provides a school board training for new directors typically around January timeframe. Some of the information that they provide is educational, financial, and legal matters. And they tell you to avoid, to micromanage the school district, trying to run the school district via email and using social media to discuss school board matters. Also, I'd like to suggest to set aside any personal agendas you may have and focus primarily on the education of our students. Remember that all public information must be discussed in a public forum, not in private meetings or in email. Confidential matters must also remain confidential. Transparency does not mean discussing confidential information in the media or discussing student matters on social media. Finally, I'd like to ask the Board to be respectful of people. We have lost several valuable people in our district because of the way they have been treated by the school board. So I'd like to thank you for your time.
Any other comments? All right, move on with the agenda.
Recommend that Plumboro School District, at the request of the school district's insurance carrier, approve settlement of the case filed in the United States District Court for the Western District of Pennsylvania at Court Docket Civil Action Number 217 CV00032 NBF in the amount of $275,000. The district's portion of the settlement proceeds in the amount of $200,000 shall be paid by the district's insurer. The appropriate officers of the school are directed to execute and deliver any documents necessary to terminate this case.
Second?
Motion is second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All that oppose?
Athletic Committee, Mrs. Caldwell, chairperson. Recommend approval to hire the following coaches for the spring 2018 season as listed.
On behalf of the committee, I'll make that recommendation.
Second?
Motion is second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All that oppose?
Recommend approval to accept the following volunteer coaches for the spring 2018 season as listed.
On behalf of the committee, I'll make that recommendation. Second?
The motion is second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All that oppose?
Mrs. Caldwell, do you have a report?
No report this evening, Doctor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is the Education Committee, Dr. Angela Anderson.
Recommend approval to create a student activity account for the Spirit Club.
Second?
Motion is second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All that oppose?
Recommend approval to accept the following donations. Kristen Rowe, $423.70 for the high school. Lindsay Lamb, $422.15 for Regency Park. Mark Dinga, $196 for Pibbick. Lindsay Lamb, $647 for Regency Park. And J.R. Pilick, $990.85 for Regency Park.
Second?
The motion is second. Is there any discussion?
Just to thank all of our professionals who took the extra time to apply for and receive these grants.
Recommend approval of the overnight conference request, Gina Bauer.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All that oppose?
Recommend approval to accept the following donation, oh, sorry, goodness. Recommend approval of the overnight conference request, Gina Bauer, March 25 to 28, PDE Data Summit, Hershey, PA. Estimated cost is $1,000.
Second?
The motion is second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All that oppose?
Recommend approval of the donation of obsolete screen material to Grace United Methodist.
After the committee, I'd like to make that recommendation.
Second?
The motion is second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All that oppose?
Dr. Anderson, do you have any other report?
Happy to be a part of a school board and deserve to be a member of the school.
Eastern area schools, Dr. Anderson, representative, any report?
Next, we got the Facilities Committee, Scott Colson.
We haven't had a chance to meet yet. I don't have a report, but I would like to bring something up that we spoke about last week regarding the moving forward on the architect's project for Center Elementary Expansion. It seemed to me that we didn't have accurate numbers based on what we covered last week as far as appropriate need of classrooms. So I'd like to make a motion to rescind moving forward on that until we've had some time to further discuss it in the committee.
This is the center addition for $1.8 million she's talking about.
I'll second that motion.
The motion is the second. Is there any discussion? All right, are there any citizens' comments on?
Tracy Riggins, four thirty-five Allegheny Avenue. First of all, thank you and welcome to the new board members. I will be speaking to you tonight on the motion item of canceling the addition onto Center. I am very sad, frustrated, and angry to be speaking to you tonight on this subject. First, I need you to know that I am not blindsided by this. I expected this to happen and I was not even hopeful that it wouldn't. However, a very small part of me thought maybe that this board will respect the previous board's decisions and hold true to the vote that already occurred about building an addition onto Center. What makes me frustrated about this is the fact that most of you have only been on the board officially for seven days. Seven days. Is seven days really enough time to make an informed decision on what to do with our current building situation? It took the previous board two years. This, of course, was after most of them halted a project that took the board before them years to decide on as well. They also halted it just days after taking office. So this is becoming a pattern. I am very angry because my child is directly affected by this decision. I want her to finish her elementary years with her friends, teachers, and school she started in. Even in a different building, we are still the same school family. I am sad because we are talking about two hundred and fifty kids that you are continuously playing mind games with. One day, you get a new school. The next, no you don't. The next, maybe they're building an addition. The next, oh wait, new board. So now they're squeezing you into a school that can't hold all of you. These are our children. They are not pieces of furniture you can just move from place to place with no feelings attached. I would also like to address the issue of where these two hundred and fifty kids will go next year. They all will not fit into one of the other schools, so you would have to redistrict. Even with the district-wide redistricting, would all two hundred and fifty kids fit into the three remaining schools? If you were going to redistrict, is eight months enough time to do that? I believe it took a lot longer in the past. Also, eight months is a stretch because how are you going to tell parents, like myself, where, which school my child will be attending the same month that school starts? Again, I expected this to happen, so I am not blindsided by this motion, but please understand the sadness, frustration, and anger that parents of two hundred and fifty children are experiencing. I would think that making a decision on children and not money-based would be the best decision for the district as well as setting a good example of what this board is going to stand for going forward. Thank you.
Ben Wolfson, two oh seven Center Street. We did this two years ago, same thing. Board take, new board, seven days, shut a project down. So now we're going on two years where they've done nothing. So to the new board members, welcome. I mean, some of them, this might be your first meeting. So we've done this. So the last meeting, they vote, let's finally make a decision, let's finally do something, let's put a center addition on. Okay. So we finally have a solution. Now, we have, I believe there were three votes no against that. That's a surprise, huh? Those three. So we're finally getting somewhere and here we go again. They're going to play their same game. Are we going to be doing this in two years? I mean, I mean, at this point, my, my son will be graduated by the time we even figure out what we're going to do. We just keep hashing over the same thing. We have a decision. The last board made a decision, we're going to do this. Let's just do it. Let's get it done. This is, this is starting to become ridiculous. We're getting nowhere. No, I mean, what if these three, that, that they voted against it? They haven't done anything. What have they done in two years? There's been nothing productive. The schools aren't safer. My taxes are higher. We're still in embarrassment. Let's just move on with this. Let's just do this. So that's what I have. Thank you.
Jennifer Kearney, four seventeen Mower Drive. And yeah, I'm not blindsided either by this because, I mean, as soon as the election was over and we saw who won, we knew this was going to happen, just like when the last election was over and we saw who won, we knew there would not be a Regency school. And that's a sad state of affairs when you can look at the ballot, know who won, and know what's going to happen to your child. They're going to get forgotten again. That is two hundred and fifty children that are being forgotten, that are being shuffled around and being given promises that aren't being delivered. My child saw the new Regency. There was a blueprint. There was a drawing. And let me tell you something, a million dollars was spent on those architecture plans and blueprints. And you know what the new board did last time in the day? They canceled the Regency project and they threw that million dollars away. And now we want to sit up there and say we're in a financial crisis. We are in a financial crisis. And it's not just because one million dollars was thrown away, but let's say that one million dollars being thrown away didn't help the financial crisis. It didn't. So now we have a board that, I'm not saying you're throwing a million dollars away this time by canceling the addition, but if we cancel an addition and you bring in modulators, whether you rent them or you lease them, and you lease them for ten years, how much are you going to pay versus the one point eight million dollars you could have with a permanent addition, permanent addition, that could be built on, the second story could be built on, so you could even expand it if you would need it? I'm just so disappointed that we sit up there and we talk about things being tabled and money being spent and I watch the board throwing money away. I watch the board table things. You're the exact people that are complaining about those things. Let me just say again, one million dollars was rejected the last time the board canceled a previous board's decision. So I would really hope you take into consideration not just the money, but what is best for every kid in this district. Because as we said, if they do not fit into those schools, redistricting is going to happen for every elementary child, every elementary child. So if you don't care about the two hundred and fifty Regency kids, I can't do anything about that. You've kind of, maybe not you folks, previous boards have kind of proven to us they really don't care. But maybe you should care about the rest of the kids of this district that you were elected to represent. Please, thank you.
Any other comments? All right, is there was a motion in the second, is there any discussion?
I guess I have to say something because, again, I'm not surprised with this either, but I think it's a real travesty and I've said these things for years about trying to get something done here. And I think a lot of the public understands, it's just not going to happen because we have people that just don't want to move forward on something for one reason or another. So, yeah, I'm not going to support the vote, but hey, this is no surprise. That's all.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All, all those oppose?
No.
Roll call.
Aye. Yes.
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 No.
Yes.
Yes.
No.
Any report, Mr. Coulson?
No report.
Okay.
No report, just a motion.
Finance Committee, Mr. Schlock, chairperson. Recommend approval of G O B invoices as attached.
On behalf of the committee, I'd like to make the recommendation.
Second.
I'm sorry, there's a thousand dollar a month charge that we're paying for renting a generator at the tran, at the transportation garage. I just want to know what, why? What, what is it? What's the generator for? Why we're doing it?
Go on, do we know this?
Accidentally. So hopefully we could get reimbursed. Does it make sense to ask for them to pay that?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay. Okay, okay.
Is that the building that we sold? I'm confused. So we sold the building and now we're paying a thousand dollars for a generator?
Well, we haven't actually closed on it yet.
Okay. Okay, I'm just curious, okay. They would do that, but okay.
Okay, that was my question.
Okay. So we can get an update next month? Thank you.
Get a motion approved on it? Was there a, was there a second?
I did.
All right, is there, motion in the second, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All that oppose?
Recommend approval of the Treasurers Report and bill payment for November.
On behalf of the committee, I'd like to make the recommendation.
Second.
The motion in the second, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All that oppose?
Recommend approval of budget transfers as attached.
On behalf of the committee, I'd, I'd like to make the recommendation.
Second.
Motion in the second, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All that oppose? As far as the report, I don't have too much right now, but there's a big meeting, a budget workshop on Thursday to fourteenth, starting at five thirty. Pazbo is going to be there. They're going to give a presentation that's going on consolidation, you know, redistricting, our options and, you know, and then John Zohorek, he's also going to give the brief presentation as well. So I'd urge all board members to try to, try to attend at all, all possible. The meeting starts at five thirty and then I, you know, that's going to be a big meeting because it's going to obviously point in a right, you know, what direction we're going to go as far as consolidating, redistricting and, you know, for the eighteen nineteen budget, that could mean as much as a million dollars as far as, you know, we got to close a holiday park and redistrict. And then I plan on meeting with John starting next week after the meeting, start working on the budget for January because we have, we'll have to get a preliminary budget for end of January. So we got a lot of work ahead, guys, but I, you know, take charge of your committees and full steam ahead.
Thank you.
Food Service Committee, Mr. Rogers, there's no report. Forbes Road C T C, Mr. Rogers, representative, do you have a report?
Yeah, it's just a quick one, Dr. Miskey. Currently, there are seven hundred and seven students enrolled in the program. There will be some student competitions coming up in the next two months. The F B L A Regional Leadership Conference competition is to be held at St. Vincent's on December nineteenth. The Skills USA Regional Competition will be held, hosted by Beaver County C T C on January fifteenth. And several contests will be conducted at various campuses, including Forbes, which will host automotive technology, advanced manufacturing, early childhood education, and computer networking and security. The normal monthly meeting is this Thursday, in which they reorganize their board. I will not be able to attend because of the conflict with our meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Intergovernmental Committee, Mrs. Rossler, chairperson, is there a report?
I don't have a report, but I am, I thank Steve for being the committee chair of Intergovernmental. I look forward to working with the rest of the board council and the new mayor-elect, Harry Slagle. I think we have a good team, so.
Okay. Thank you. Legislative Policy Council, Mr. Schlock, representative.
Ah, no report as well.
Personnel Committee, Major Kohler, chairperson. Recommend approval of the following. Recommend approval to accept the resignation of Krista Mitchell, junior high cheerleading coach, retroactive to November twenty-eight, two thousand seventeen.
On behalf of the committee, I'd like to make that recommendation.
Second.
Motion in the second, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All that oppose?
Recommend approval to rescind the November twenty-first, two thousand seventeen motion to hire Joseph Pierce, full-time custodian, effective January second, two thousand eighteen.
On behalf of the committee, I'd like to make that recommendation.
Second.
The motion in the second, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All that oppose?
Recommend approval to hire Connor Bernazoli, full-time custodian, effective December thirteenth, two thousand seventeen.
On behalf of the committee, I'd like to make that recommendation.
Second.
The motion in the second, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All that oppose?
Recommend approval to hire Cara Dugas, food service worker at O Block Junior High School, effective January third, two thousand eighteen.
On behalf of the committee, I'd like to make that recommendation.
Second.
The motion in the second, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All that oppose?
Recommend approval to hire Cynthia Kreis, bus aide, effective December thirteenth, two thousand seventeen.
On behalf of the committee, I'd like to make that recommendation.
Second.
The motion in the second, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All that oppose?
Recommend approval to hire Jean Walter, bus driver, effective December thirteen, two thousand seventeen.
On behalf of the committee, I'd like to make that recommendation.
Second.
The motion in the second, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All that oppose?
Recommend approval to hire the following substitute teachers for homebound instructors at the contracted rate of thirty-two dollars per hour, effective December thirteenth, two thousand seventeen, Caitlin Griffin, Jessica Fierst.
On behalf of the committee, I'd like to make that recommendation.
Second.
The motion in the second, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All that oppose?
Recommend approval of the following leaves. Kristen Rock, special education teacher at the Plum High School, honor about May eighteen, two thousand eighteen through December three, two thousand eighteen. Kathy Gloss, staff nurse at Regency Park Elementary and O Block Junior High Schools in accordance with the Family Medical Leave Act, retroactive to November thirteen, two thousand seventeen, through the end of the two thousand seventeen eighteen school year.
On behalf of the committee, I'd like to make that recommendation.
Second.
The motion in the second, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All that oppose?
Major Kohler, do you have a report?
No, no, nothing to report tonight. We'll be meeting very soon.
Policy Committee, Mr. Wisnewski, chairperson, do you have a report?
I'd just like to, no official report, just want to announce today. On Monday, I took some time out of my schedule and met with Dr. Brewer and just trying to collaborate to find out how we can streamline the, the process going forward with myself and the policy committee. He shared some very good ideas with me and I shared those with Angela and Sue, my two committee members, and I'm looking very forward to further working with the, the four of you and, you know, updating our policies. There's, there's no reason things need to be taken as long as they're taking, so we're going to, we're going to streamline that process and move forward. And one other thing I do have, everyone's been talking about transparency and moving forward and digging into policy. I, I would like to make a move to form an ad hoc committee, calling it the Selection Committee to ensure that all nine members of our board are involved in the, the process of hiring the new superintendent. So I moved to form a selection committee of five members of the Board of Directors for the purpose of selecting ultimately a new superintendent. The committee's selection process shall be done by nomination of groups of five to make up the committee and thereafter a vote by the board. First part of my nomination. The second one is I moved to nominate the following five to make up that five-person committee. Angela Anderson, Scott Coulson, Vicki Rossler, Scott Kohler, and Steve Schlock. And just to read it to everyone's where the, the process that we plan to move forward is to be all-inclusive, to be inclusive of all nine board members at the beginning and end of the hiring process. All nine board members will have the opportunity to review all applications and resumes brought before the board for consideration. After we, after review, each board member will identify their top five candidates. Each board member's top five will be turned over to the five-member board selection committee. In turn, the selection committee will review the applications turned over and they shall select the best three or four candidates to be interviewed by the entire nine-member school board for the duration of the process.
I will gladly second. I just wanna clarify with Mr. Dice, do we have to have that as two separate motions, or can that be all one? Okay, then I'll second, and I guess we may need to do citizens' comments.
The motion in a second, is there any citizens' comments? Any, is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All that oppose? Motion passes.
Safe Schools Committee, Mrs. Rossler, Chairperson, do you have a report?
I do have a report. First, I'll start with agenda items. Items on the agenda that did not move forward to the voting meeting are the need for additional daytime security personnel, four metal detectors, 12 ones, additional cameras, and gates at the high school. I will leave these items on the agenda for a board discussion in January. Vulnerab, vulnerability assessment. The, um, board agreed and gave direction for administration to move forward with having an outside agency perform a safety assessment of our schools. Um, Dr. Brewer has reached out to the Pennsylvania, or the, um, Pennsylvania School, or Pennsylvania State Police Risk and Vulnerability Assessment Team and got word that the, um, the, the, um, police department is backlogged up to a year. So we're gonna bring this back to the Safety Committee in January to look at other options and bring this back to administration. So, again, he reached out to that R V A, Safety Assessment Team, and they're backed up for a year or so. And I know we've asked that before on the school board, too. Caldwell brought that up probably a year ago, and no action was taken. So now we're backlogged to a year. So we're gonna look at maybe other options through the committee. Moving forward, administration to head safety. For now, it's my understanding that I will work with Dr. Brewer to lead safety in the district. I welcome his return to the head of safety and look forward to working with him again. Thank you, Dr. Brewer. Policy 707, the signs to inform residents there is no use of school property during school hours will be installed by the end of the month. So right now, um, the previous board did pass the policy that states the guidelines for student, staff, and volunteer safety. School district buildings and grounds are not open to the community during school hours. There was to be signs put around the pro, on the school district property. It's not there. And the board gave direction for administration to have that done by the end of the month. So that's where we are with that. Comprehensive plan, the comprehensive plan. I will be participating in the Safety Committee for the district's comprehensive plan. This committee is open to all my fellow board members. The S R O grant. The district received a grant for the S R O program in the amount of $60,000 for the 2017-18 school year and an additional $30,000 for the upcoming 18, 19 school year. So this is a two-year grant the district received, and thanks, this is thanks to the efforts of Jeff Wolf. So I'd like to personally thank him on behalf of the board. District CPR, the district is still in the process of putting together a plan to certify ninth graders in their health class. Alice, big news on Alice. The alert lockdown, inform, counter, evacuate. The students at the high school have completed Alice training, and today I got word that the students completed Alice training at O Block. So I would like to thank Officer Little and Jeff Wolf for that training they provided the students. Vaping, there will be a presentation for all students, um, second through eighth grade by Dr. Stefanik during the months of January and February. He will address vaping and other, vaping with older students, and that's the fifth through eighth grade. Drug awareness, I ask, um, parents to take an opportunity to review the material your child is learning about drug and opioid crisis. Um, you can go to the OperationPrevention.com, and all the information that we teach in our classrooms is on that website. Again, that's OperationPrevention.com. Um, the vestibule, uh, meeting this week with employees for input on the vestibule at the high school. Uh, this will prohibit unauthorized access into the high school. And last but not least, moving forward, I will be reviewing the last two years of agendas for the Safety Committee and look forward to working with this new board to readdress some of these items that were not moved forward. That's all I have.
Transportation Committee, Mr. Zuko, Chairperson, do you have a report?
No, Dr. Amensky, we don't want to have a report because we did not meet this month. But I'm going to get together with, uh, Scott Coulson and Brian Wisnewski, and we're going to get a meeting set up with Scott Mergan and, uh, John Zahorecheck. I'd like the new members to be able to take a look at the actual facilities as well as all the, uh, programs and everything that we use at the, at the facility, including our communication system and so forth. So at their convenience, and whenever it's convenient for all of us, we will be getting together on that. That's it.
Thank you.
President's report. First of all, I just wanna thank the board members for nominating and approving me as president. I'm honored and also very eager to lead this board and also the school district to help get this district turned around in the right direction. I would congratulate Vicki Rossler, uh, for becoming Vice President. I know she's gonna do a great job. You know, she's done a great job with Safe Schools already. She's still the chair, and I think her and I will form a good team. And I think, uh, you know, we're, we're gonna be effective leaders to get this district turned around in the right direction. And I'm also congratulate all the newly-elected board members because they obviously got elected by the community and the public for a reason. They're gonna be, they're good model citizens, and I'm eager to work with you guys as well, and I think we're gonna get this district turned around. And first off, uh, one of the big decisions we're gonna make is a superintendent. So, and there's a community survey out there now on social media, and, uh, and it's, it's, it's on a website, too, a school website. It's gonna be posted and taken down at January 9th at midnight. So just keep that in mind. The next vote, the next voting meeting is January 30th. There's a discussion meeting on the, on the 16th. And then the, and there's committee meetings before that. We're splitting it up in two different weeks for committee meetings. Obviously, I wanna wish everyone a happy and Merry Christmas and a joyous New Year. And I'm looking forward to, uh, working with the new board starting next year. Thank you.
The January meeting schedule, uh, January 3rd, there are committee meetings in the boardroom. 6 o'clock is education, 6:30 athletics, 7 o'clock policy, 7:30 food service. Uh, I just wanna note that the board did decide to do, uh, committee meetings on the first and second Tuesdays of the month, discussion meeting on the 3rd, and the regular voting meeting on the last meeting of the month. And January is a unique month. January 3rd is a Wednesday. It's not a Tuesday because we're closed on Tuesday. They are open to the public. January 9, 2018, the committee meetings are 5:30 facilities, 6 o'clock Safe Schools, 6:30 finance, 7 o'clock transportation. January 16th is a discussion meeting at 6 P. M. in the boardroom. And January 30, the regular voting meeting at 7 o'clock here.
Because of length of the meetings, because they're so long.
You can, you guys can email us if you want.
And, and just, just, I, I support that. If we can't look into that and possibly move that, I, I support that because I'm on Facilities Committee, and 5:30 is tough for me to make. I mean, e, either way, we're still gonna probably have a meeting at 5:30 if we flip-flop.
Citizens' comments are supposed to be in the beginning. You're not letting this talk and carry on throughout them. Well, it's, you have to follow policy, so. We have to follow policy. Board policy. No more, no more, no more.
We just need a motion to adjourn. Just make a motion to adjourn.
Make a, make a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion in a second, is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.